Yeah, the script is incorrect on announcing which district you are. I'll help you with that too.
Oh. So it would be, we adjourn as in North Clackamas.
We're live now, Tudy.
We're live.
Welcome, and I call to order the May 13, 2021 Business Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, Administrator, please call the role.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support this evening Christina Twilliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council, roll call in the hearing room. Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader will be joining shortly, and Commissioner Schull, is Commissioner Schrader here?
I'm here.
Commissioner Schrader, my apologies. Commissioner Schrader is on Zoom. She is present. Commissioner Schull will be joining shortly. Thank you, Chair.
I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you're interested in providing public testimony, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this meeting. We also have a brochure for people on public testimony, how to testify before the Board of County Commissioners. There's some very good tips on what to do, how to do it to relieve your anxiety if you have trouble speaking in public. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Chair Smith, thank you. First, we have wildfire updates. Daniel Nibauer, sorry, Daniel, Daniel Nibauer, our interim Director of Disaster Management, will present. Go ahead, please.
All right. Good evening, Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Smith. Update on the wildfire recovery status. We have an update from the Tax Assessor's Office on amount of destroyed and damaged homes. Originally, it was estimated at 110 properties with 62 residents destroyed. We have updated numbers of 41 destroyed houses, 25 destroyed manufacturers' homes, and eight damaged houses. It's a total of 66 unique properties because some of the properties had two houses or a house and a manufactured home on it. Our long-term recovery group, which is our group of nonprofits, community-based organizations, faith-based organizations that are working with survivors to help them recover through this process, now has a fiscal agent and is able to accept donations. They have received a few donations. I will say, one in particular, from an Estacada Girl Scout group who donated $200 from their Girl Scout cookie sales, which was great, but they are getting other donations as well and also working on analyzing data, estimate the amount of survivors that they anticipate being able to support with funding, materials, and labor needs to rebuild. In housing, our building codes, permits is continuing to receive permits for those that lost their homes, for residential buildings, accessory structures, electoral, and driveway permits, among others. Roads is working on entering more information into the FEMA portal and have target completion date for all the projects that they intend to do. Debris management is still going along. The private property debris removal has completed 10 properties so far, and they are continuing to do hazardous tree removal on private properties, arrival of the debris removal crews. And we have our field liaison out that is reaching out to all property owners within the wildfire perimeter to make sure that they are aware of the deadline, the May 31st deadline for the right of entry so that they can have any hazardous materials, debris, or hazardous trees removed from their property if they wish to do so. That is all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the presenter on the wildfire report? Seeing none, Gary.
All right. Next, COVID-19 updates. We have Philip Mason joiner, the county's Public Health Director, to present, and there's a lot to talk about, including breaking news. Philip, so please go ahead.
Thanks. Christina, if you could please share the slideshow, and Daniel will get us started with the case counts for the week.
Make sure I have the right numbers. Next slide, please. So, change since May 5th, I have 537 additional cases and four deaths in Clackamas County. Multnomah County had 762 additional cases and 10 deaths. Washington County had 510 cases and three additional deaths. Next slide, please. You can see our graph here where we moved into extreme risk and then down to high risk, and we continue the downward trend on our case count by week by 581 being our last number. Next slide. Our patient count is kind of going up and down a little bit. We're a little bit back up from the previous report. Next slide, please. And for the two metrics that could potentially put us into extreme risk, percent change has negative 2.3. We need a positive 15% change to be considered in extreme risk, so that condition is not met. And next slide, please. So, right now, our cases per 100,000 population are 293.8 with a test positivity of 8.5, which would otherwise put us in extreme risk except for the hospital metrics, which are not met for that case.
Good evening, Chair Smith and Commissioners. This week, lots of news. The state earlier this week provided a clear path forward for loosening restrictions for businesses. Counties that are eligible to move to low risk beginning next Friday if they are 65% of their eligible people aged 16 and older at this point have received their first dose of the vaccine, and if the county has submitted an equity plan to the Oregon Health Authority. We had developed an equity plan here at Clackamas County back to last fall that we've been using and updating throughout our vaccine distribution efforts. Staff are now working the past couple days, they'll work early next week to update the plan to answer all of the state's new questions in their required format, and that will be ready to go once we hit that 65% threshold. The state of Oregon overall, once it hits 70%, 70%, then counties will move in, all counties across the state would move into the low-risk category. So, we'll see counties around the state submitting equity plans as early as tomorrow with the hope that they'll be able to move into low risk next Friday. For Clackamas County, that's not yet the case. We're making progress, we're not quite there. And the good news is, this does provide some predictability, some guarantee that counties will not be moving back into a higher risk level. They will remain in low risk moving forward, according to the state. So, next slide. As of yesterday, we are at 56.4% of our 16-year-olds and older populations have received at least one dose, so that's very good news. We are really close to 200,000 Clackamas County residents being vaccinated. It has been a monumental task with lots of partners and really appreciate the community and folks who have gotten the vaccine to help move us forward as a community. I just wanted to share locally, we, this, just in the past few days, we had seven second-dose clinics. We have three more this weekend. We were in Sandy in Oregon City High School today, providing first-dose Pfizer vaccine for high school students, and now 12- to 15-year-olds are eligible, so providing vaccines for them as well, who have parental consent. We were also up on the mountain at Welch's at the middle school, providing vaccines for folks up on the mountain, and several more events planned this week that I, or next week that I'll share. Our public and government affairs staff continue to work in the EOC, providing mass communication, sharing information about vaccine availability. We have regular events at the Clackamas Town Center in Canby and Sandy and in Malala, and those will be things that are more regularly available each week that the community can expect. We're also working to have more evening and weekend options available as we move forward as we are seeing now vaccine supplies become more available. We're seeing around 7,000 to 10,000 doses locally we have available to put on these events. So, we're making a lot of good progress. Also, our community-based organizations that have contracts through the state have been a huge help. We have over 30 of them. They're doing a lot of work out in communities, helping folks get scheduled, including county staff. We're also going a lot of neighborhood, door-to-door, providing information, education, flyers, helping people get appointments. And we're also seeing pharmacies. I checked today, lots of our local pharmacies around Clackamas County. You can go on right now and schedule appointments. So, access and the barriers are being removed, which is very, very good. Let's see, what else I want to share? There's so much going on. Next slide, please. I just wanted to share this. I've shared different demographic data around the vaccine and access. Last week, shared an update on our race and ethnicity data. This is looking at different age groups, so you can see older adults, they've, of course, had a longer time to be able to have access to get an appointment, but you can still see folks in their 30s, 40s, 50s are not yet at that 70% threshold, which is really that estimated herd immunity that we want to see across different populations. And we continue to work hard to get the vaccine available and provide, provide the community with the information they need around getting the shot. Next slide, please. So, this is a busy slide, but it just shows you, we have worked with all 10 school districts in Clackamas County on specific events at their schools, at their community. This is different than Washington or Multnomah County, who is providing buses and taking them into the convention center to get vaccinated. We're providing, public health nurses and other partners are vaccinating at their school communities. Been a great effort so far. We will, in the weeks to come, our goal is to have, have opportunities available before school gets out for the summer. And then we have appointments throughout the county this weekend, and the bottom side got cut off, but at the town center on May 20th and 21st, big event, over 2,000 doses available. Appointments available right now on our website, very easy drive-through or walk-up. These events will also not require an appointment, but it's helpful if you go ahead and just pick a time slot so you have a guarantee that you'll definitely get, get the vaccine. So, we have a lot of events available and planned, more coming soon. Really want to encourage folks to, to, to get vaccinated and, or make a plan to as soon as they can. Next slide, please. So, again, hop onto our website. More appointments are becoming available all the time. If you need help, call us at 503-655-8224. We even have now some new funding from the state of Oregon that provides incentives, which we're looking at, we're working with staff in terms of how can we provide food or gift cards or other, other incentives to, to support local businesses while also help the community with getting the vaccine, and transportation options, paying for folks to have transportation to a clinic if, if they need that help. Finally, the mass vaccination clinics, they start the Oregon Convention Center and the drive-through in Portland. Their last day that they're providing first doses is May 27th. So, I've heard from a lot of folks that if you are able to make it into Portland, it's very fast, it's very efficient. They've got the National Guard there, they've got the hospitals there, very, very quick process, you're in, you're out, it's easy. Really want to encourage folks to take advantage of this resource in our region while it is still here, and we are actively meeting with the hospitals. As those mass sites ramp down, they'll be supporting our local, local clinics this later into June and into the summer, so that'll be a big help. The final breaking news today is that the CDC announced for fully vaccinated folks that they're no longer required to wear face coverings or physically distance, and Governor Brown also, right before this meeting, shared a video saying that Oregon will be moving forward with that. So, that is, we are still waiting on guidance from state agencies, exactly what that will mean locally, and we'll communicate that out. And Gary, if you'd like to share for Clackamas County what that means, that'd be helpful.
Yes, so, we, the OSHA, the Oregon State Occupational Safety Health Office, still has the existing policy in place that you must wear masks inside workplaces. So, until we have, until we have further guidance from the state, we still have a mask policy here at Clackamas County for employees and for the public. So, we're all wearing masks today in this room, whether you're vaccinated or not, and that will remain the case for county employees. So, Commissioners, I ask, let me work on this with staff, Human Resources, County Council, Emergency Operations Center. I'll come up with a proposal. Actually, it's my decision to make as Administrator, but I will definitely share it with you Commissioners before I do it on what my proposal will be. I'm concerned by how difficult this will be. We'll have to ensure people are vaccinated for them not to wear masks in a place of employment, and I'm not sure how we're going to coordinate that. Anyway, I'll come up with a proposal and share it with you, but until then, our mask policy remains in place for employees and those visiting our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Philip, have you finished your presentation?
Yes, I have. Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple Commissioners in the queue, and I have some comments as well based on my conversations with the Governor this week. Paul, you are up.
Yeah, so, Philip, thanks for your presentation. I'm going to go back to the vaccine counts and, you know, this goal of 65 or 70%, whatever it is, and then we get to go to low risk. So, I'm kind of curious as how that count is done. I thought it was striking in a way that, you know, we're sitting here at 50-some-odd percent, 54, 55% hovering there, and Multnomah County is close to 63 or 4, whatever it may be. And, you know, I do know the Convention Center was so successful, a lot of people I know went there, and some of them were scared that if they told them they lived in Clackamas County, they were concerned they wouldn't get their shot. So, they said, oh, my daughter lives in Portland, or I live in Portland, and use their daughter's address, or something like that. So, my question is, how, and then some people in Clackamas County drove to other counties south of here to get their shots. So, how are we actually tracking our numbers as counties to know what our real vaccination rate is? Because it seems as though if Multnomah County had that number as high as it is, was, was been on the news, then today's numbers, for example, shouldn't be as high as they are. They had 156, I think was today's numbers for new cases for Multnomah County in one day. So, that's a little bit higher than it was yesterday, but it's still up there. So, you would think that the ones with the highest vaccination rate should have some of the lowest numbers. So, help me, the numbers don't, don't jive.
A few thoughts. So, regardless of, vaccine's a state resource, and no matter where in Oregon you get the vaccine, it will be reflected in the state's immunization registry. And they've even worked it out, so if you get your shot in another state, it takes a few more days, but it'll be reflected in the data. So, that's all put into account. You know, at our Clackamas County clinics, we've served folks in other counties in Oregon, in other states. It's rare, but it does happen. You know, I do think there are, of course, advantages of having one of the mass vaccination sites in your county, so Multnomah County's done a good job getting folks vaccinated. You know, I don't know what Marion County says, but that'd be interesting to look at with having the Salem Fairgrounds there. You know, I can't speak to Multnomah County's case count. They have a lot of businesses, they have a lot of congregant settings, they have a lot of long-term care facilities, you know, all sorts of reasons for why their case counts might be high right now.
All right. So, assuming that that number is correct, that we need to get the 65, 70%, and I'm just wondering what our capacity is per day? If, you know, and I, we know that it's, the demand's waning right now, not as many people are, are signing up or showing up. So, what, what can we expect? Are we vaccinating 5,000 a day? Because like, we can do the math pretty fast and figure out what day of the month or approximately what week of June or July we'll have 65 or 70%, but we're a long ways away.
Yeah, I think, we'll be at that 60, at the current pace, factoring a little bit of slowdown, I do think mid-June is when we'll probably be at that 65%, and it sounds like the state of Oregon probably won't be at that 70% threshold until around July 4th.
Around when?
July 4th.
Yeah, so you don't have a rough number of what our, our vaccination count is per day as far as administering shots, and then what our supply is as well? I'm just trying to figure out how we put ourselves in a mathematical, in a mathematical position to actually get to that number.
We get around 10,000 doses, first doses a week right now, so, you know, we could expand that capacity. Also, you know, we've had, last weekend, we were at the town center, not all the doses were used, even with walk-up, even having evening appointments, so that's part of the challenge as well.
Hmm, yeah, so I come up with four weeks, 40,000 if they're all used, does that move the needle enough?
And keep in mind that the other Salem Fairgrounds folks are going to, the Convention Center and the drive-through at the airport are still available until May 27th, which is tens of thousands of doses there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Philip, you were able, through the Health Department, to identify some subset groups who we could possibly target for the vax, and those making vaccinations available to some, some of these people really early in the morning, in their evening, and the thought is that either working at their jobs or they're too busy taking care of whatever, and they just haven't got around to it. And then the other group, the other subset group is people who are vaccine hesitant, and I should, I correct myself, there's a third group. There's a third group that doesn't want the vax, period, fine. What efforts do you think that we could use, and you and I talked about this earlier, to get out into the community by being more mobile? And I had a nurse come to me and say, I would like to be able to go out and deliver the vaccine to people's homes. You know, I talked to the Governor about it yesterday, and she said she loves it, you know, vax on the road, I love it. And so, how, how, would we be able to identify those people, possibly call them and ask them, not that it's mandatory, because it's not, maybe this would be a way to help raise the vax level?
Yes, absolutely. We've been doing some mobile, going out into communities with vans, with partners, and with our public health nurses for homebound folks, folks in adult foster homes, also going to workplaces. I think there's great potential for that to expand.
And now we have some money coming into Clackamas County. Our, our share of the first round is a little over $1 million. We can certainly afford to put some of our vans on the roads with drivers to assist our health people who want to volunteer. Now, if any of the health people want to volunteer, how do they do that?
So, for any licensed healthcare providers that can volunteer to help be vaccinators, and that's where the biggest need is, they can head on to our Clackamas County Public Health website and enroll in the Medical Reserve Corps.
Medical Reserve Corps.
The Medical Reserve Corps, and we have used a whole lot of those volunteers to help us with our local clinics.
Okay, and, and I have a group of nurses who are just really gung-ho to get this going, and they have been vaxxed and, and they have had their patients vaxxed, and they claim to be that, you know, it's, it's safe to do, although it's different for everybody, and I will maintain that we are not forcing vaccinations. I just want to be able to increase the availability. We have not had a lot of the vaccinations in Clackamas County, but you say that that number is going up, and I posed that question to the Governor yesterday, and I said, you know, we have appointments and our vax is, you know, slowed down, and she said that she promised that Oregon would have enough vax that we need in two days, and that we're pooling from other states who have an oversupply and don't need them, are offering them to states like Oregon, who has had what we perceive as shortages. So, that's encouraging for people as well, if they want to do that. I have to say, though, I think our Public Health Department has done a very good job in getting out to the public and targeting people who may not have economic access or other barriers to the vaccine, and that's a huge equity portion that in this new round of allocation needs to be looked at. Would you like to, care to address the equity in our next round of vaccines, or have you always been doing it?
I think it's, it has to be at the forefront. You know, for those who are working frontline essential jobs and don't have flexibility to take time off to get the vaccine, maybe need additional support and guidance from their healthcare providers, talk to someone they trust, but it's difficult to even get a medical appointment, you know, those are all the issues that we're working with partners to address. So, those early morning, evening clinics, weekend clinics, really want to encourage folks to call our call center. If, if they're having any barriers in place, we want to hear what those are so we can help.
And maybe we can make an effort, I think there's an effort that we can employ that I'm very interested in, for us to be more proactive in reaching out and say, hi, hey, we're here, and see what happens. I think it's probably going to be expected of us, from our state leadership, that we engage, we ramp it up yet another degree, not that you're not doing well, but, and I expect Multnomah County will go to 70% and be open far earlier than Clackamas County, and that's going to be a rub for our people, frankly, because those businesses are going to be open, we're not going to be able to be open, and so, that's where it goes. You know, you had an idea, I was not real in favor of paying people to be vaccinated, and I'm still not, but you did have a good idea to give a gift certificate from a local business in Clackamas County, like a coffee shop, I'm just, you know, or whatever, a restaurant, when they get vaccinated, so, and then that supports our local businesses who have been hard-hit too. So, it's, it's a double, it's a double incentive to go out there. My only caveat on that is, for all the people who have already been vaccinated, they are not, they will not receive incentives for that, so I'm conflicted on that, but I guess that's not going to be my decision totally. I just wanted to go on the record and say that. I see another light on.
Commissioner Fisher?
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So, Philip, I, as Commissioner Savis does, I do the same thing. I like work numbers and work on my calculator and try to figure this thing out, like, when's the date and when can we get there? But my first question is, right now, the number that we're basing everything on is for 16 and over, and you're saying we have 56.4% of 16 and over are vaccinated. Now, very soon, children are going to be able to, from 12 and over are going to get the vaccine. Does that change, then, the percentage? Is the percentage, 65% of from 12 and over are vaccinated, or will it still be the 16 and over?
That, the 12- to 15-year-olds being eligible happened last night, so, we did, we have asked the state that question, if they will be making that change, which will be very, very helpful in getting us closer to 65, but we're still awaiting a response. I think we'll go, I imagine they're very, very busy too, just like we are, and we'll get a response on that soon.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm wondering if it will be helpful, because if it just means that much more of the population is included in the pool of what you add altogether to get 65%, then I just don't know. Do we have a number of how many people? I don't know how many kids we have that are between 0 and 12. Do we know how many more people we need to get vaccinated to get to 65%?
I will bring that next week. I don't have it in my brain. It's available.
You can't just like, get it, get it through? That'd be great. I would really like to know that. And then I would like to hear a little bit more, Chair Smith mentioned it, but it, just about what the conversations are regarding incentives, if it's gift cards. I mean, I've heard of certain events that people have wanted to do, and there's a lot of things being thrown around out there, but I do, and there's a lot of things being thrown around out there, but I think now is the time to really push this so we can get our economy moving better.
We've started initial discussions with business and community services in our chamber around ideas. I think the gift card, some communities have done food trucks for you, you know, you get your shot, you get a snack, you go. Something like that is really good. Events and festivals that we've seen around the country, that is giving us a little bit of pause, just because we don't want a lot of unvaccinated or partially vaccinated folks congregating, you know, in a, you know, in an event and not able to keep distance and things like that. But incentives where we can, I'll share, you know, being at the high school events this week, it's been pretty funny that the biggest incentive is getting that sticker that they can put on their water bottle or button. People, high schools have just been absolutely over the moon to just get a sticker. So, you know, partly incentive, of course, is your risk of severe illness and death from COVID-19 is reduced. So I also want to continue to mention that, too.
And then our timeframe around incentives, do we, when we all have some ideas so we can start marketing that to folks?
Well, hopefully, Daniel, do you have a sense?
I talked with Sarah Ekman earlier today, and she's already reached out to the Business Recovery Centers about how we can engage, identify some local businesses and start working on this.
Okay.
Commissioner Fisher, I talked to them today about possible PSAs on areas that we have not done before, maybe the radio, TV, and then banner ads on social media. I don't know, you know, we're going to have money coming in. And just as an education piece for that to, this is where you call, if, you know, somebody can come give you the vax, that type of thing. And logistically, they'll have to decide how they want to do that.
Yeah, yeah. I really like getting more, I'm almost feeling like we're in competition with other counties and wanting us to win, but I just don't see that we can win because we're at 56.4% and Multnomah County's at 63%. But as much as we can do to help encourage people and make it as easy as possible.
Well, you know, it's not bad, because as of Monday of this week, we were at 52%. So we rose in a very short amount of time, even before the incentives were announced. So, you know, this to see what organically happens.
Yeah.
You know, we could get to 60, 63%. Multnomah County and Washington County, who have been tracking closely, their numbers went up. What are their numbers now?
Multnomah is now at 64, and Washington is at 63. So if tomorrow they can both get over that threshold and have their equity plan done, they could submit that. If they get to 65 by 4 o'clock tomorrow, they could move into low risk next week.
Yeah, and that's interesting. You have to apply, have your paperwork done by Friday, like tomorrow, so the next week they can go to the low category. And I'll go to dinner, I guess, in Portland, huh, at the restaurants? No. Commissioner Scholl has arrived from his Fair Board meeting. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here.
You bet. Any other comments or questions for Phillip or Daniel?
Just a comment.
Yes.
We need to, we need to have about 20,000 shots a week to get to mid-July administered. I mean, I guess that's, now, that first doses are all, are fully vaccinated.
First.
First doses. So we need to have 20,000 a week to make it by the middle of June.
That's a good number. Thank you, Paul. It's a good metric to shoot for. Say, if the rest of the state, for instance, goes to 70%, and Clackamas County is at 60%, then what happens?
All counties would move to low risk.
All counties would rise with the boats. So the rising tide rises everybody, is what we're saying. Then we need to cheer on Multnomah and Washington County and some of these other counties. Yes, absolutely. That's interesting to me. Okay, any other comments? For the presenters, thank you very much.
Thank you both, Phillip and Daniel. More to come, commissioners. We'll keep you posted. Ready to move on to the first presentation tonight, a proclamation of May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Clackamas County. We have Sheriff Angela Brandenburg and Under Sheriff Michael Copenheaver to present, both from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Welcome, and please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Sheriff Angie Brandenburg, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. I'm here with my under sheriff, Mike Copenhever, and he's going to give the presentation.
All right, thank you. Chair Smith, Commissioners and County Administrator Schmidt, it's great to see you all again, and thank you for your time this evening. The sheriff and I are honored to be here to formally request that the board adopt a proclamation stating May 15th is Peace Officers Memorial Day here in Clackamas County. On behalf of the dedicated men and women of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and our city police partners, I want to say that we are really appreciative of your support, and we are proud to serve this great community. Historically, the state of Oregon has lost 190 law enforcement officers in the line of duty. Seven of those fallen heroes are from here in Clackamas County. Please allow us to share a video with you. This video highlights our law enforcement memorial ceremony from last week.
Sorry, I'm just trying to. Eximize that, there we go.
So Lord, we come today to remember. We ask for your care and for your comfort and aid on such an event like this. This event is not cheap, nor is it unimportant. It is, however, about supporting a group of officers serving our agencies and communities, individuals and families. These officers who have given the ultimate gift of service, their lives. So these moments that we have here are so important. It is a time to pause, a time to remind, a time to be grateful, and a time to be thankful, thankful for their sacrifice. And it is also a time to strengthen those that are serving. For those that serve, it is a time to remind, remind them of the value of their work, their care, their purpose, as they live a life of sacrifice and service. So we thank you for moments like this, to remember the fallen. And we ask for your blessing on the families of the fallen, but also on the families of those that continue to serve. And we pray these things in your comforting and strong name, the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Today, we gather together in this beautiful memorial to honor and pay respects to the fallen. We are here to honor local law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. They died while selflessly protecting and serving the people of Clackamas County. Each and every day, this memorial serves as a reminder to all of us, as a reminder to pay tribute to the heroes we have lost, to make promises to never forget their ultimate sacrifice, and to honor the many loved ones they left behind. As of today, 190 law enforcement officers have been lost in the line of duty across Oregon. Seven of those were here in Clackamas County. Thousands of police officers answer the call to serve our communities. Being a police officer is a just and noble calling. We know that at any given moment, any one of us may be called upon to make the ultimate sacrifice. We answer this call with strength and conviction, because we are the guardians, standing between the innocent and the lawless, between light and darkness. There is no higher calling than to give of ourselves for the greater good of our community. As we risk our lives to protect those that we have never met, let us not forget to live in the present, to live our lives boldly, to live our lives filled with love, with joy and intention, to take care of ourselves, to take care of our families, and to take care of one another. There's a famous poem written by Linda Ellis called "The Dash." The poem is a meditation on the opening and closing dates of a life, and it contains words to live by. I read of a man who stood to speak at the funeral of a friend. He referred to the dates on the tombstone from the beginning to the end. He noted that first came the date of birth and spoke of the following date with tears. But he said what mattered most of all was the dash between those years. For that dash represents all the time they spent alive on earth, and not only those who love them know what that little line is worth. For it matters not how much we own, the cars, the house, the cash. What matters is how we live and love and how we spend our dash. So think about this long and hard. Are there things you'd like to change? For you never know how much time is left that can still be rearranged. To be less quick to anger and show appreciation more, and love the people in our lives like we've never loved before. If we treat each other with respect and more often wear a smile, remembering that this special dash might only last a little while. So when your eulogy is being read, when your life's actions to rehash, would you be proud of the things they say about how you lived your dash? As we leave this memorial today, may we forever hold memories of the fallen in our hearts and never forget the sacrifices made not only by them, but also by those that love them.
Officer George J. Hanlon, Oregon City Police Department, killed in the line of duty April 23, 1906. Sheriff John R. Shaver, Clackamas County Sheriff, killed in the line of duty April 30, 1906. Sergeant James H. Worrell, Milwaukee Police Department, died in the line of duty December 31, 1953. Deputy Jimmy Lee Shoup, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, killed in the line of duty November 7, 1981. Deputy William Douglas Bowman, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, killed in the line of duty September 12, 2000. Chief Daniel K. Duncan, Lake Oswego Police Department, died in the line of duty May 20, 2010. Officer Robert A. Lipke, Oregon City Police Department, killed in the line of duty November 4, 2013.
Thank you, Christina. On behalf of the sheriff and the men and women of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, we respectfully request the board to approve the proclamation recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. Do we have any comments or questions for the presenters on this resolution? Do commissioners have any qualifying questions? I will accept a motion.
Chair Smith, I move we approve the proclamation of May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Clackamas County.
Second. We have three seconds. We ha!
Good for us.
Christina, you've picked whoever was your second on that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? Would you please call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, Sheriff Brandenburg and...
Under Sheriff. Under Sheriff Copenhever.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, my mind just left me. Thank you very much. It was a very heartfelt presentation today.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Gary, what's next?
All right, next is the consent agenda, and I'll ask Christina to please read the consent agenda by title only.
So we'll start with Health, Housing and Human Services. Number one is approval to apply to Funding Opportunity HRSA 21093 with Health Resources and Services Administration for Health Center Program Expansion School-Based Services Sites. The maximum agreement value is $400,000. With funds through the Health Resources and Services Administration, no general funds are involved. Number two, approval for Amendment Number 10 to an Agreement Number 7462, a revenue agreement with Care Organ for delegated credentialing processes. This is for a revenue agreement, no general funds are involved. Number three, approval of Amendment Number 5 to Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Gladstone, Gladstone Senior Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. This amendment adds $6,176 for a maximum value of $60,713 and is funded through the Older American Act and Ride Connection Pass Through Funds. No general funds are involved. Number four, approval to Amendment Number 5 Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with City of Oregon City Pioneer Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. This amendment adds $34,531 with a maximum total of $212,516 and is funded through the Older American Act and Ride Connection Pass Through Funds. No general funds are involved.
I know, I know.
I'm just gonna mute Mark there really quick. I believe I'm on Number 5, approval of Agreement Number 5 to Intergovernmental Subrecipient Grant by Friends of the Estacada Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. This amendment adds $47,410 for a maximum total of $152,049 and is funded through the Older American Act and Ride Connection Pass Through Funds. No general funds are involved. Number six, approval to Amendment Number 5 to an Agency Subrecipient Agreement with Foothills Community Church Malala Adult Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. This amendment adds $31,564 for a maximum of $165,629 and is funded through the Older American Act and Ride Connection Pass Through Funds. No general funds are involved. Number seven is approval of Amendment Number 5 to Agency Subrecipient Agreement with Hoodland Center Senior Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. This amendment adds $841 for a maximum total of $83,132 and is funded through an Older American Act Ride Connection Pass Through Funds. No general funds are involved. Under Department of Transportation and Development, Number 1, Department of Transportation for the Transit Development Plan, Oregon Department of Transportation is directly contracting with a project consultant for the $175,200 grant award. County staff time is assist in project. Completion has been through an in-kind match of $23,891 funded by STIF funds, no match required. Board order adopting the vacation of Midway Street. Application and processing fee received, revenue only. No general funds are involved. Number three, board order adopting the vacation of a portion of Shefford Street. Application and processing fee received, revenue only. No general funds are involved. Number four, approval of an Oregon Department of Transportation Flexible Services Agreement. No fiscal impact unless there is a need to share transportation-related equipment and material. No fiscal impact unless there is a need to share transportation-related equipment and materials, which will be charged at providers' invoice costs or at the provider's rate used for internal financial management of personnel and equipment. Funding if needed through the road fund. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a purchase and sale agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Brolin Co. This will cost $31,631 plus closing costs with funding through Business and Community Service Department and North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District funds. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Do any commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has made a motion and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion?
Chair Smith, excuse me, there's one typo under CE1 that I want to call before you vote. It's under Business and Community Services. This sale, this purchase and sale agreement is between Clackamas County and Brolin Company. The next item under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation is between Parks and Recreation and Brolin. There's two separate contracts you're approving. I apologize, but I want to catch that before you voted.
Yes, and we'll go into the Parks Board after this item, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Gary. Seeing no objections, Christina, would you call the poll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. I know it gets confusing because we wear a lot of hats. Thank you, we'll get through this just fine. The board will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the next consent agenda. Gary?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. Next is the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda. I'll ask Christina to please read the consent agenda by title only.
We have one item on this. It's approval of a purchase and sale agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Brolin Co. This will cost $31,631 plus closing costs with funding through the Business and Community Service Department and the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District funds.
Thank you, Christina. Does any commissioner wish to pull this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Chair Smith, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Savis has moved for approval. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may I, will you please call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, the motion has been approved. The board will adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and convene as a Water Environment Services for the next consent agenda.
Thank you Chair Smith. Next is the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, we have three items on this consent agenda. Number one, approval of a contract with Michaels Corporation for the Collectible System Rehab Project. Contract value is $679,966. Funding is available and has been budgeted for this work in fiscal years 2020 and 2021 and 2021 and 2022. No county general funds are involved. Number two, approval of a contract between Water Environment Services and JGEA Mechanical Equipment U.S. for the services agreement for the Water Master 6000 centrifuges. The total contract value is $250,000. Number three is approval of a contract between Water Environment Services and Unison Incorporated for the Digestor Gas Conditioning Media, $200,000 annually with a total contract value of $1 million. And that's funded through procurement.
Thank you for that. Does any commissioner wish to remove this item? May I have a motion?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Scholl, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Christina, would you please call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, the motion passes 5-0. The board will adjourn as the Water Environment Services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Up next is Public Communication, and I have three cards here of people in person who will testify first. And Christina, how many do we have online?
Online, we have four.
Four, okay, good. Up first is Mike Weber. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you Chair Smith and Commissioners. Mike Weber, Oak Grove. It has been two weeks and a day since my second COVID shot and I finally feel comfortable enough to attend an indoor gathering. How fortunate that it coincides with an evening session of the Commissioner's business meeting. I could not think of a better way to spend my Thursday night than having my voice heard by my elected officials. I would like to take a few minutes to talk to the H3S staff about their plans for the COVID-19 vaccinations. With most of the people who were eager to get the shot fully vaccinated, it is time to focus in on what we can do to get the vaccine reluctant to get their shot. We are at the stage where there is enough vaccine out there without the clinics are taking walk-ins. I applaud Commissioner Fisher's leadership in bringing up incentives and Chair Smith's receptiveness to follow her lead. As was mentioned, perhaps some of the federal money coming in could be used for that purpose. For example, whether your favorite shot comes from a bottle of Jack Daniels or from the muzzle of the Glock, a shots-for-shots program seems attractive. You can partner with local taverns and shooting ranges and offer people a round of drinks or a round of ammo, your choice. There are many other ways to reward people for doing a patriotic duty and bring customers into local businesses. So I will leave it up to you to be creative. Commissioner Savis, alcoholic vouchers could be made valid a few days after the day of the vaccination to avoid any potential side effects. As the CDC has approved the Pfizer vaccine for the 12- to 16-year-old age group, some thought may go towards adding clinics at local middle schools to those at the high schools. As the end of restrictions is in sight when we hit 70%, I once again call on Chair Smith and Commissioner Scholl to unequivocally encourage their base to get vaccinated, both here and in social media. With regard to last week's garbage meeting, I understand there were some fireworks. Chair Smith, a word of friendly advice. When a Metro executive who has no reason to lie to you asks for a favor, especially a softball request to speak out against racism, it is best just to listen to what that person has to say, empathize with their pain, and either agree to their request immediately or demure with, I will certainly look into it. It is generally poor optics to focus on your perceived grievances and your animosity to Metro and then shoot the messenger. Metro's Chief Operating Officer Marissa Mandragill did not deserve your utter disrespect. What she does deserve is an apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Chris Waller. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. Finally, it's been two weeks since my second vaccine and I can be at this meeting safely in person. I'd like to start with a recommendation. Last week, we heard from several social service providers who were concerned with your plans to cancel the emergency declaration related to housing. They made a very valid point. Having public comment at the end of the meeting means that you do not get to hear from us before you vote. Yes, I know we can email you, but we all know that emailing does not make the same impression as being at this meeting does. So I would like to ask that you move public comment back to the beginning of the meeting to avoid situations such as the one you had last week. Next, the governor's new metrics for reopening our county should give us all hope and determination. We can do this, but we need your help and not your hindrance in the process. On May 11, Chair Smith reposted the commission's announcement, the county's announcement about the new reopening metrics, excuse me, to her personal Facebook page as well as to Tootie Smith for Oregon. Her followers responded with various vicious attacks and outright delusional statements. For example, one posted, "You put a link to get the poison injection in your posting. Don't try to backpedal your enthusiasm now that the blowback has started." So what did Chair Smith do? Did she attempt to educate her misguided and misinformed followers? No, she removed the link and replaced it with a photo of the original announcement. And she responded to her followers, "I'm just presenting the information." Chair Smith, your behavior is actively enabling and inflaming science deniers and conspiracy theorists. Here's what you could say. It's your choice whether or not to get vaccinated, but I want you to make that decision based on facts and reason, not on scientifically unsupported hysteria or Russian propaganda. Here's an analogy for you. You're approached by a friend who says she got an email from her bank saying her account was suspended. She's convinced she needs to log in right now with her social security number to reopen it. How would you respond? Would you say, "It's your choice"? Or would you try to prevent harm and educate her that she was falling for a scam? She'd still have the choice whether or not to click that link. Education enhances your ability to choose, it does not remove it. You could encourage critical thinking and inform civic discourse. You could save businesses by helping our county reopen. Please do the brave thing, the right thing, and educate yourself and your followers. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Les Poole. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. Been in the county for almost 30 years. That was a very moving presentation in tribute to the police officers. I really appreciated that. And it helps put things in perspective when folks come in and do too much nitpicking. Very briefly, I would like to get some more information out there, however we can, and maybe some comments at the end of the meeting about this bill in Salem, HB 3065. And once again, we saw legislators take an existing bill. It's too late to introduce a new one. So they took a bill, they gutted it, and in came tolling. And we ended up having an emergency meeting here. All kinds of amendments and attempts to deal with this. But I would like, just for the sake of the public and for all of us, a better feel for what we can do, whether that bill's an emergency, and just some clarity about it because it's very troubling. And that's HB 3065. I'll conclude with a couple of comments referencing and encouraging folks to please go back and watch what I said last week. Please take the time, go to BCC Clackamas, and watch the video of Mr. Weir, who has raised some rather troubling questions about the conduct and participation by Commissioner Fisher. And I am referring to paying for hit pieces. I'm referring to making accusations that have not been substantiated. And it's just not going to go away. It is not going to go away, Commissioner Fisher. It is county business, and it was unacceptable. So again, I ask the county, the staff, I certainly, as a citizen, cannot direct anyone here. But we need some answers to what's been revealed. And what's been revealed, it has been described in the Clackamas Review by one person as Mr. Weir being delusional. I want every person that's watching to go back and watch the questions and the testimony and listen to the testimony from Mr. Weir about Commissioner Fisher's conduct and how Mr. Scholl was treated. Regardless of whether or not you like Mr. Scholl, whether or not you know anything about Mr. Scholl, the conduct that has taken place deserves a look, and I'm talking about a deep look.
Thank you very much, Les. Appreciate it. This has ended our public portion in the room, but we have people online, Christina. I'll turn over the rest to you.
I do, I have four people registered. And we'll start with the first one. That is going to be Connie Lee. Connie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Connie Lee, Lake Oswego. Last week, Marissa Mandragill, Chief Operating Officer for all of Metro's facilities, including the zoo, asked the Clackamas Board to help her employees at the South Metro Transfer Station by condemning some racist slurs and actions, which included the placing of a noose at their work site. Unfortunately, Chair Smith interrupted her and berated her instead of expressing compassion for the employees at the transfer station. While Ms. Mandragill apologized over and over, it should have been Chair Smith who apologized. Berating a person reporting to the board is out of line, but berating a person who is telling you about racism in the workplace is completely unacceptable. But that's not all. Chair Smith implied that Ms. Mandragill's report may be untrue. She essentially said her words could not be trusted, and she would have to check up on this version. I am a 77-year-old white woman, and I have done and said things that were unconsciously racist. But when it was pointed out to me, I apologized and I admitted I was wrong. It happens. We white people often do this. But our society will only improve if we take the time for self-reflection and then apologize and go on and do better. Another thing to consider about the situation at the transfer station is that the employees, especially those that are BIPOC, have been harmed both physically and psychologically by the racist actions and words. Remember, a noose is a death threat. And carrying around fear for a long time causes harm within the body, which turns into high blood pressure, heart problems, respiratory problems, and many other health problems, depending on the person. Two years ago, I spent months researching a resolution called Racism is a Threat to Public Health. Words can cause harm when they're cumulative. Let's be careful to be kind to each other, especially when we're talking about race and racism. Thank you.
Up next, Christina.
Up next is going to be Bill Weir. Bill, go ahead and unmute yourselves, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Yes, good evening Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Weir, Damascus. This evening, I want to make a recommendation on taking a step to resolve the unanswered questions leading up to the censure of Commissioner Scholl and the aftermath of the censure. First, repeated key questions by myself and others are met with silence or deflection. There has been, in the last six months, tens of thousands of dollars going through Commissioner Fisher's campaign fund. Included in that is yet another $2,500 to her political strategist and a new $10,000 cash expenditure to another political strategy company since the last time I spoke. No other commissioner has anywhere near those amounts flowing in and out of their campaign accounts. As I mentioned before, a public employee union recently gave $10,000 to Ms. Fisher's account, what may be all of the Clackamas County Department heads condemn Commissioner Scholl in a written statement given to the media. With a county department head having, quote, "Stamping out one white supremacist at a time your life depends on it," included in its logo, and other... time your life depends on it," included in its logo, and other examples of prejudice articulated by public employees and various advisory committee, it seems to me that the working environment is poisoned with Shoal hostility. With the appearance of Commissioner Fisher's financial activities with using county resources and any number of Clackamas County employees campaigning against Commissioner Shoal, it demands questions already posed to be answered. Among the questions remaining is, Commissioner Fisher campaigning against Mr. Shoal or lobbyist for the public employees? And which county employees are involved? I believe it is critical that this commission and certain county employees are not viewed as using dirty tricks and cancel culture to overturn an election. I also think that the county is incapable or disinterested in providing the documentation or conducting its own investigation into these matters. Therefore, I respectfully request that you engage an outside entity to investigate the how, why, and who is behind this crusade to nullify Commissioner Shoal's election. It needs to be impartial, and the results made public on the county website. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We'll move on to the next. That's going to be Elvis Clark. Elvis, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Elvis Clark. I live in Milwaukee. Tonight, I wanted to, you know, earlier tonight, you commemorate the sacrifices of police officers. We have our Commissioner Shoal, who put himself in harm's way and actually receives the Bronze Star for his service to the country. And I would like to see the Board rescind its earlier vote in January that censored or asked for the recall of, I mean, not recall, but the resignation of Commissioner Shoal. Commissioner Shoal is unfairly maligned, in my opinion, because he challenges the status quo on such things as homelessness and land use and taxes and things like this and spending. But we know the status quo on things like homelessness are failing. We need to try different solutions, as championed by Commissioner Shoal. And so please forgive Commissioner Shoal, who has apologized for his Facebook postings, and encourage him to bring positive changes unique to Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Elvis. We'll go ahead and move on to the last one. That's going to be Sarah Zager. Sarah, go ahead and unmute yourself, and state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Sarah Zager, and I'm a resident of Milwaukee. I recently read an article written in 1974 by Malcolm Clark Jr. called "The Bigot Disclosed: 90 Years of Nativism." Fascinating article. I'll email a source to the Board after this meeting. It covers the attitudes and beliefs that led to the rise of the KKK in Oregon in the late 19th and early 20th centuries, which in Oregon was primarily an anti-Catholic organization. I'll provide some quotes from that article. Large numbers of Protestant Americans were convinced that the Catholic Church was a political organization and that because of their required allegiance to the Pope, an allegiance which was, in fact, purely spiritual, no Catholic could be a good American citizen. And the generally sympathetic attitude of the Catholic clergy impressed to the aspirations of labor was demonstrable proof of a Romish conspiracy to introduce socialism and anarchism into the United States by violence if necessary. In May of 1896, Oregon Presbyterians, meeting at Woodburn, passed a resolution arguing that naturalization could be denied any Roman Catholic who refused to force where his allegiance to the Pope. Now, as a Catholic immigrant myself, I am certainly glad that we can look at these beliefs with hindsight glasses and know how untrue and hateful those statements are. But it struck me that this hateful rhetoric mirrors many of Commissioner Shoal's social media posts directed towards Muslim Americans. In fact, at a press conference this January, after apologizing, Mark Shoal, acting as commissioner, stated the following: "The Muslim community believes that the Quran and its provisions for Sharia law is the only way that good government can be achieved, and the Muslim leadership believes that national borders are wrong and that open borders should be implemented. These were called out as untruths immediately afterwards, and I don't believe that's ever been addressed. I cannot remain silent when an elected official spreads vitriol and hateful rhetoric targeting a religious group." Another quote, often attributed to Mark Twain, "History does not repeat itself, but it often rhymes. I urge the Board to reject bigotry at its ranks, and I urge Mark Shoal to step down." Now, I would also like to ask about someone whom Commissioner Shoal has described as a friend, who seems to be acting as his public relations representative, who is taking and answering questions from the public for him as well as issuing public statements for him on social media, is involved with coordinating and encouraging members of the public to attend these business meetings to speak in support of him, encourage people to come to these meetings specifically to speak out against other members of the Board, physically accompanies him on county business, whether official or not, posts for selfies in front of homeless residents of Clackamas County, and has posted videos filmed in his office on social media. I would like to know if this is an official role, and if so, is it paid? And if that's the case, is this compensation coming out of taxpayer funds? I feel that more transparency we hear would be appropriate. My thanks to the Board, and I appreciate the work you do for everyone in our county.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. That is the end of my list. Chair Smith.
Thank you. We will end the portion of the public testimony. And Gary, can you introduce the next item?
Yes, Chair Smith. Next is county administrator update, and that's me, and I will present an update. First, in accordance with the county COVID-19 emergency declaration, number 2020-14, I signed a contract on your behalf, and I'm seeking your ratification of that contract I signed. It was for disaster management. I signed it on May 12, 2021. It is a memorandum of agreement between Clackamas County and the Canby School District for the use of school facilities for COVID-19 vaccinations and drive-through clinics. There is no monetary value. The county will pay, however, for any expenses to ensure the facilities are returned to pre-use conditions. If so, the expenses will be paid with, paid from, paid with from CARES Act funding. No general funds are involved. The agreement exists until terminated by either party. I'm seeking your ratification of this item I signed on your behalf.
I move to ratify.
Second.
Commissioner Savas has moved to ratify. Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
All right. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
You can hear the barking dogs.
Aye. I'm not sure how a pooch would say aye, but...
They're all joining in tonight with me.
Chair Smith.
Aye, and the motion has passed 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then just a quick update, commissioners. As you know, we have an online public survey for our residents to give feedback to you, commissioners, on how you should spend the $81 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds that are coming to Clackamas County. As of last night, over 3,000 people have responded to that community survey. That's the second highest survey results we've received here at Clackamas County so far. This is all feedback to help guide you, commissioners, when you will make your decision, because it's your decision to make, on how to spend these funds that will be coming to Clackamas County. Thank you to our Public and Government Affairs Department, who have spearheaded our public engagement efforts, and they're working, because in this case, 3,000 residents have shared their input with you that we'll share with you after the survey closes on May 31. So there's still time to participate for those of the public who have not done so yet. That is my update. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Gary. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. Let's start with Commissioner Schrader. You're up.
Well, thank you, colleagues. Actually, I'm going to start by thanking all of you. As you know, I had a new grandchild way back in December of 2020, and did not have an opportunity, saw him when he was first born, this is Devon, my little guy, and was able, finally, after getting vaccinated and waiting the appropriate amount of time, to travel to Boston to see him. And as you know, he's a year and a half now. So like many folks who have been isolated throughout this epidemic we've been experiencing, the pandemic, really not seeing my grandchildren, not being able to have any contact with them other than FaceTime was pretty hard. And I want to thank my colleagues because you were very supportive when I said I really now have a chance to see him. So I did for a week in Boston, but I have to tell you, it was an interesting experience because my daughter is a prosecutor, her husband is a corporate lawyer, and we all sat in different sections of the House doing our meetings via Zoom and the other, you know, using the technology that we used. So not only did I get to see my grandson, I got to see my kids and how diligent they are and how wonderful it is to see them succeed in their fields of employment. So thank you for supporting me in that, and hopefully I can support all of you when you have the need to go see those kids that you haven't seen in a while. Other than that, today I attended the National Associations of Counties Board meeting. It was a good meeting, and I have to say that, quite frankly, I think one of the reasons why counties across the United States have gotten the American Recovery Act dollars that we are going to receive is largely because of the efforts of that organization at the federal level, getting the ear of the President, getting the ear of the Treasury, getting the ear of the folks who are assigned to intergovernmental relations with cities and counties to say, "The dollars need to go to the local areas, they need to go to counties, and they need to go to cities." So I want to give a shout out to the National Association of Counties. I would encourage all of us to have an opportunity to be a member of the National Association and go to their meetings. They are well worth it. And without their help, our county, as well as every county across this nation, would not be getting the recovery dollars that we need to help our local constituents. So that was an eye-opener for me as well. Finally, I did have an opportunity to visit Rosewood Station with my colleagues this morning, and that is the Ped Corp Project. And we had a chance to tour the various apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, see the amenities that are available, get an update on who we're serving in those communities. And I have to tell you, it is a phenomenal project, and it's, I think, one of the things that we need to showcase as we move forward with our housing agendas and really try and get more capacity for our folks. And I'm sure my other colleagues will have other statements to make with that. So thank you, and I just want to let you know, yes, I do talk to my dogs, so occasionally you may hear me doing so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader, for that, for your compelling remarks. How should I say?
Thank you.
Up next, Commissioner Shoal.
Yes. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank those of you who came in to testify this evening, and for those of you who called in. I appreciate it very much. I would like to correct the record. Sarah Zagner, thank you for your testimony tonight, but you attributed a quote to me that actually came from one of the leaders of the Muslim Education Center. That is available on a Zoom recording from 18 January. But I'd like to say that to the leaders of the Muslim Educational Center and to the imams there, as they know already, I have great respect for them. They're convicted in their beliefs, and as Americans, they have a right to have their opinions. I might not always agree with them. But I can also tell you that since 18 January, I've had very positive interaction from those leaders of the Muslim community. And I, once again, I'd like to say thank you to Wajdi Sahid for his hospitality and kindness that he showed me in early January. Next, I'd like to say that I'm very happy about the proclamation of May 15 being Peace Officers Memorial Day in Clackamas County. In Clackamas County, we have law and order 24/7/365. And because of the professionalism of our sheriff's department and those police departments in our cities, it's going to stay that way. And the word's out that when you come to Clackamas County, you best not break the law because you will pay for it here. Thank you again to our law enforcement people and all the administrative folks who also make our police law enforcement effective here in the county. Next, I'd like to say a comment about House Bill 3065-8. That's on tolling and congestion pricing. This week, Chair Smith brought the Board together on Monday evening to talk about this. We're all very concerned about it. I think we did the best we could to send a message to Salem that we have concerns about the application of tolling and congestion pricing and how it's going to affect the people of this county. So I would ask the residents of the county who are here this tonight to contact their senator, contact their representative, and let them know how you feel about House Bill Next, I got some good news for everyone. Whenever I go to Canby and meet with the Clackamas County Fair and Rodeo, it's always a pleasure. They're really good people. They're working hard down there, and they realize that the Clackamas County Fair and Rodeo is a piece of Americana. It is something that everyone, no matter what their background is, really truly enjoys. So they're working hard to make the fair and rodeo happen this year. Their drop-dead date for go-no-go on the rodeo was 1 June. This evening at the meeting I was at in Canby, the reason I was late getting here, they moved the drop-dead date on the decision for no-go and no-go to 10 June. So we're going to be waiting for 10 June to find out the final word on whether or not the rodeo happens. But if I was a betting man, I would say the rodeo will happen, again, if I was a betting man. And there's some good news. They announced that the Representative Drazen and Senator Kenner have committed some of the money that they'll receive from the American Rescue Plan to go towards the construction of a new barn and display livestock barn at the Canby Fairgrounds. And as you recall, the old one was taken down several years ago because it was not safe. I won't tell you the number of that amount of money. I'll let the Fair Board announce that when they're ready. But that was really good news. And again, I thank everybody from the Clackamas County Fair Board for all your positive work, and what a great group of people. And I think, Chair Smith, that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Up next, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just going to roll the clock back and talk a little bit about HB 2017. After the governor in 2017 signed the bill, HB 2017, the months following, ODOT put together a regional tolling committee in which I sat on representing Clackamas County. And in that, in those months carrying on into 2018, the data and the estimations were put out there that to toll a short section of I-205 and to toll a short section of Interstate 5, at the time, north of the Rose Quarter, would cost roughly about $300 million. And that $300 million, whether you look at the tolling revenue that would generate it, or whether you look at the cost of where it would go, was administrative, and it would not create any monies for capital projects or mitigation as far as diversion. I think that's a big deal. And now what's considered in HB 3065 is tolling all of I-5, from the Boone Bridge north to the Columbia River, and all of I-205 from Interstate 5 north to the Glan... the Columbia River, and all of I-205 from Interstate 5 north to the Glen Jackson Bridge of Columbia River again. So I'm sure that a $300 million estimate of $2018 would be significantly higher for that much more of the highway. So that said, I just want to roll back. Why? Why is Clackamas County, who does not own Interstate 205, who has no responsibility for I-205, been such an advocate for repairing I-205, repairing the bottleneck? And I would maintain that since being a commissioner, the issues that I have heard of, and the safety issues I've heard of, along Johnson Road, Borland Road, Stafford Road, Willamette Falls, Highway 43, and a lot, even Gladstone, a lot of our communities, when I-205 backs up, people divert. And they divert on our local streets, where our children play, where we commute, where we walk, where we ride our bikes, everywhere we go. Freeway traffic, the responsibility of the Federal Highway Authority, the Federal Highway Administration, excuse me, and the responsibility of the state of Oregon. It's not our facility. The bottleneck on the Abernathy Bridge, which I drive under virtually every business day when I was coming to work at Oregon City as a county commissioner, often you would see not only the standstill of the traffic up there, but sometimes the flashing lights from the accidents that would happen, because the bottlenecks of people trying to merge. A safety issue, a diversion issue, safety issue on the freeway, diversion issue in our neighborhoods. Westland City Council, members of the Willamette Community, Oregon City, Canby seen diversion through their, through their roads. When it backs up, they divert off the Donald exit, or they divert off the next north exit, forgot what it is, the Charbonneau exit. And they divert through Canby, and that creates their own traffic and diversion. So what have we learned so far? If you look at all the data, and you read all the data, which I'm wonky that way, that you'll find out that the data shows that when you toll, you have a greater amount of diversion. So instead of fixing the problem of diversion, the cause of diversion, which is obviously congestion or the bottleneck, which we're trying to fix, to avoid diversion, we're creating a whole nother level of diversion. We're creating a problem we don't need to create. I said that recently, I said that in 2018, the tolling committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas.
Chair, I'm not quite finished.
Oh, I thought you said you were done. I beg your pardon.
Yeah, that's all right. So I, I just want to say the significance, the significance of this is that I'm really wondering what we're really doing. I'm really wondering why we're creating such a problem, and why we've lost sight of what we're trying to do. We're trying to, you know, public safety is important. I, if you hear about the number of pedestrian accidents and people being killed on our roads, and then you want to add more diversion off the freeway, that is just going to, just exacerbate the public safety issues in our, in our towns, whether it's Monmouth County, whether it's Portland, Gresham, Gladstone, Oregon City, everywhere we go. And I'm really not sure why we are so headstrong on this. Is it going to generate a lot of money? It's going to generate millions of dollars. And I'm afraid that is, I think that is the motivator, and I think that is sad, that we would put millions of dollars of revenue generation in front of public safety. And for that, that concludes my comments for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. I thought you said you had finished.
That's all right.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair Smith, and thank you, Commissioner Savas. I really appreciate your comments a lot, and I appreciate so much you sitting through all of those meetings and continuing to have us as a board and a previous board become educated on, on these issues. And I think your most compelling statement is that I-205 isn't our responsibility, it is the federal highway in the state of Oregon, and yet we are the ones that deal with the challenges of I-205 being unsafe and bottlenecked and backed up, and, and that's also very true. What I appreciated about this board and our emergency meetings, I first of all appreciated Chair Smith calling the emergency meeting, although I had to pull off of I-84 in Gresham, take the call at a place where there wasn't any shade, so I was kind of hot in my car during that meeting. So I didn't really appreciate that part, but I did appreciate the dialogue and the conversation, and I deeply appreciate this board sort of threading the needle and saying, we support this insofar as we support making I-205 a priority project, but we do not support tolling because it will have a disproportionate disparate effect on Clackamas County. And that was great. I thought that was very, very good. I appreciate Chair Smith being on that call to make that testimony. I also don't know if our public affairs folks had us, had any say in how the press reported it, but I think they got it right on the quote that was, that was given, and we're right. We need the public to connect, Commissioner Scholl is right, with our senators or representatives, and I also think the Transportation Commission, who is further, taking further study of tolling. And we need to activate the people, because we are, of course, the county commissioners that represent the people, but we need, we need help with this if we're going to make sure that as this rolls out, it doesn't hurt us too badly, because we don't make those laws as a county commission. This legislature did that, and they have to be the ones responsible for implementing. So I wasn't planning to talk about that, but Commissioner Savas, you inspired me. I did want to share, and I think the rest of us will be having opportunities to go on a ride along with Amy Jo Cook, our community paramedic. Has anybody else been able to do that? Okay, so Commissioner Scholl.
I'm going to do it Monday.
I went, was it yesterday? Why do I forget the days? I think it was yesterday.
I'm doing it tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
So what, and I'm going to be getting some more information, but when I started off, we do a little briefing in our office, and there was a stack of the most recent overdoses in Clackamas County, because what they do is they take that information, and then they go and provide linkages and connections as part of Project Hope to help people on a path towards recovery. And it was, this is just what they do. This is what happens at the beginning of their day, are those pieces of paper. And it's just like, wow. This is too many pieces of paper for my comfort, and I'm wanting to know more. I'm wanting to know, they say anecdotally, the numbers have been increasing. We have heard that there's more fentanyl and that the drugs are more dangerous. I know that April Heron with our Clackamas County has those numbers. I'm going to be getting more information about how, if it's related to the pandemic, if it's related to fentanyl, I'm wanting to understand more of the linkages. But the other takeaway I had is, oh my gosh, our community, Amy Jo is just, she just has a heart of gold, and we visited a, some folks that needed some help, they'd lost some services, and they needed connection back to social services and had a health issue, and we were in their apartment, talking to them, and getting all those phone numbers to who are the doctors, who is this, and she's going to go back and make all those linkages and connect them up. In addition to going out into homeless encampments in Clackamas County with shots, she carries around in the car, the bag of vaccines, and if those folks hadn't been vaccinated, she would have been able to give them a shot in the arm right there. It was really the values of Clackamas County in action, and I just so appreciate it. I've done that before with Amy Jo, and I very appreciate it and was very, very inspired by that. Wanted to talk about, we all, well, Commissioner Smith, you had a car problem this morning, so you weren't able to join us, but the rest of us were out at PedCorps and hoping you can get out there to see the really wonderful place where we have more housing in Clackamas County. But my gosh, it is expensive, even though it is considered affordable for a three-bedroom, it's $1,300. For a two-bedroom, I don't know.
$1,167.
Thank you, $1,167, and for a one, I mean, it's expensive, but it's, it's considered affordable. It really struck to me that the median area income is now like $90-some thousand in Clackamas County, area median income, and 60% of that, you can see, it's like $50,000 to $60,000 a year people make. Well, those are, you know, our teachers, our people, our public employees, or these are professional folks that are needing to live in housing that is built with a whole connection of low-income tax credits, property tax abatements, and other, other partnerships to make all that happen, just to make it a little bit more affordable. But it is expensive, and, and it's, was a real wake-up call, although it was a beautiful space, and I would be happy, I'd be happy for the folks that, that do end up residing there. Lastly, there was, there's, I've been involved with Reimagine Oregon. Commissioner Savas and I share that liaison with that group, and I missed an email, in my email, because they have a new coordinator, and Kimberly, who is so great at seeing everything, she missed it too, so I don't feel so bad, but I still feel kind of bad, because they sent an email out a week and a half ago, that there is a meeting actually tomorrow at noon, and as Commissioner Schrader is off, got, went on an airplane to go visit her family in Boston, I'm going on an airplane to visit my cousin in Marin County tomorrow at noon, and I cannot be a part of that call. And I know that our administrator Schmidt is going to free up his calendar to be there on the call, but if any other commissioner can be part of it, they have switched their format, so they share information, and then they put us in breakout groups, so you have smaller conversations and share with other elected officials around the state on some questions. I found it very useful, the last meeting, and I really hope that one of our, any of our commissioners can, could attend. Everyone is welcome, and they are, you can attend, and it's at noon, and you'll have to get a special link, so would really appreciate it if somebody could, could attend in my face. So there you go. There we go.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. No, I had fully intended on the tour with you. The address was put in my GPS and took me to a totally different location. I passed it once, I turned around, went back, and I drove into what looked like it could have been a structure. At that point, there was this big hill, my car went up like that, I couldn't see, there was a, half of a steel post that stuck up underneath. I went over the top and ripped out the pan underneath my car.
Oh.
At that point, I was not a happy person, and was talking to Emily, and she says, where are you? And I said, I don't know. Where am I supposed to be? And so I totally blame the GPS on my county phone that put me into some other place. So I limped back, and we'll see what the damage to my car is. I'm so happy about that, as you can imagine. Well, so, I attended the Associated of Oregon Counties Conference Monday in Hood River with two of my other commissioners. It was their first in-person conference in over a year. It was a hybrid model. We had many, many people on Zoom, and it was really, really good to see some commissioners whom I've known for many, many years, and some new ones as well. We had a very nice lunch that was hosted by the AOC. We had some very interesting presentations, one of which I attended on broadband in underserved areas, rural areas, and what other counties have done. And I tell you, what some of these other counties have done has been nothing short but remarkable. They've been able to connect people who live 500 miles away from each other with their internet services. And I'm scratching my head like this, seeing why the heck can't we connect Colton with Estacada? You know, we're missing the boat on this, and I'm very, very serious about moving this board forward on a, on a decision to get this done. In July, the AOC is going to host a forum solely dedicated to broadband services in rural areas, and I will be in attendance, and I hope all of our board can do that. Details are coming on that, so this is something that we really need to do. All of us attended our own town hall meeting a couple weeks ago and had listened to all the stories. It's just really incredible. And you know, Martha Schrader said it right, the broadband internet service is our next utility, and I do think that this board needs to take it as a priority and move forward and really figure it out with the help of a lot, a lot of smart people out there. I tell you, commissioners, we have some commissioners in other counties that have just brains full of how to do this stuff, and I'm just in awe of them, and I'm going to really, you know, reach out to them and use that, that service they have. I see no other comments before this board. Thank you, commissioners, for a very informative meeting. We are adjourned.
Glad you're okay there.